Our meeting to order. We've got a couple of council members that are going to be absent this evening. We're going to start with the invocation and pledge of allegiance. We have Rob from the Bridge here. Thank you, Rob, for being here this evening. Pastor Rob. And we've got, um, Rob McKenna that is. That was weird that I didn't use your last name. And then we have Carol Perstak is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Is that right? Okay. If you could all please rise. Thank you.
Always a pleasure to be able to do this with all of you. Heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, for tonight. And, Lord, as we come to the end of this year, Lord, I'm reminded of a word in your Scripture that tells us to rejoice always, to give thanks in all things, and to not quench your spirit. And so tonight, we give thanks today as we come to the end of the year. Thank you for what you've done in our city. Lord, I thank you for our leadership. Lord, I thank you that your grace has been upon them in the good times and, Lord, in the difficult seasons, the difficult choices. And, Lord, as we step into a new year, I pray that you would continue to do that. Lord, lead our city officials. Lead our council, our mayor. Lord God, give them a sense of understanding and direction as they cover our city. And, Lord, as I pray always, Lord, especially coming into a new year as we, New Year's, we give thanks, Lord, that you're a God that watches over us, that you protect us, that you keep us safe. And, Lord, I pray that for our police officers and our firefighters. I pray that over the children in our community, over the teachers, administration. Lord, so many things to ask that you would cover. And thank you that you do that. And, Lord, we give thanks for all those that take care of our city, to keep it clean, to keep our parks and recs operating. Lord, once again, just many things to keep in mind. And so, Lord, as we come to the end of this year, Lord God, we celebrate all that you've done, and we look forward to the new year, that you would bless it in mighty ways, and that you would continue to do what you do. Lord, thank you for loving us in spite of our own failures, Lord God. We give this to you, and we pray this in your name. Amen.
.................. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor McKenna. It's always great to hear your words. Much appreciated. And thank you, Councilmember Perstak. All right, we have a special presentation. Oh, roll call. Roll call. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, as usual. Do you want to conduct roll call, please? Thank you.
Councilmember Baldino.
Present.
Councilmember Giroux is out. Councilmember Perstak, here. Council, excuse me, Mayor Protan Pimentel is also absent. Mayor Boiles.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we've got a presentation. We've got a commendation regarding the El Segundo Community Christmas Dinner. And Mr. George, or who's going to? I know we got a couple of people from the community to accept the award.
Yes, our deputy city manager will do the introduction of this item.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Voss. This is the El Segundo Community Christmas Dinner commendation. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Okay, Mrs. Mancini.
I'm sorry.
I can jump in.
Of Community Services is stepping up. Thank you.
Yes, is this on? Okay, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. We're very delighted to have two very special women here this evening, Commissioner Julie Stolnak and Ms. Val Smith. They're the co-chairs of the Holiday Dinner Committee, and they have been working very, very, very diligently and very hard on this, making this a really special event. It is a dinner that we host annually for those in the community who may not have the means to have their own holiday dinner, or who may not have family or others nearby. And we want them to come together and feel welcome and feel part of our community. And these ladies and their organizations both assist with that. So I will welcome or invite Ms. Stolnak and Ms. Smith up to the podium here.
I'll say something. Rotary stepped in this year to plan this with Julie and the rec department. We're really excited about it. We have a lot of volunteers from the community and our members, so it's going to be a great event. We have entertainment games and great food. So we're looking forward to it on Christmas Eve.
Great.
Anything else you want to say?
Nope. And just the details. So it's at the Jocelyn Center. And what time again?
Twelve.
Twelve PM. And do people need to register? How do they go about it? Do they just show up? Just show up?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Anything to add there, Mrs. Mancini?
No, anybody is welcome, anyone from the community. The event starts at 12:00. It will wrap up right around 3:00. And like the lady said, there'll be food and entertainment. It should be a great time. Everybody's welcome to join us.
Excellent. Okay, so I want to just say thank you to both of you. Mom, you're an incredible volunteer and community leader. You never cease to amaze me how many jobs you have. And Julie and Mrs. Stolnak, I mean, from the time your son, who's now a grown man, was wee big at El Segundo Nursery Co-op. I know you've been involved with case and just Rotary and many other facets, constantly giving back. And so thank you to both of you. I've got a commendation. If you can bear with me, I'll try and read it quickly, and then have you accept it, and then we'll take a photo, okay? It says, "Whereas the El Segundo Community Christmas Dinner was conceived by El Segundo resident Bill Kaufman in 1983, Bill solicited the help of local businesses, residents, and organizations to fund, cook, and serve a traditional Christmas dinner that brought people together to share the holiday spirit. And whereas the El Segundo Community Christmas Dinner has become a hometown tradition that has served the community for over 30 years. And whereas the annual Christmas dinner will be provided this season sponsored by the El Segundo Rotary Club, along with the time and effort of many individual volunteers, along with the support of the recreation park and library's department's outreach office. And whereas the El Segundo Community Christmas Dinner will be held at 12:00 PM on December 24th at the Jocelyn Center for the benefit of all those in the community who wish to participate in fellowship and share in some Christmas cheer. Now therefore, on the 20th day of Christmas 2022, the mayor and members of the city council of the City of El Segundo do hereby commend and thank all sponsors, supporters, and volunteers for their unselfish community service in keeping this hometown holiday tradition alive in El Segundo." And it's signed by the council. So great. How many people do you think you'll get this year?
I think we're planning for around 75, if that's correct.
Awesome. I've been in the past, and it's great to see people enjoying the food, so.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, I plan on attending this year as well. So let's present this to you and get a photo. Is that all right, Robert? Okay, great.
I would just like to add also that our city clerk, Tracy Weaver, her mother did this event for many, many years on Christmas Day.
That's, man, she's, I'm learning so much about what she's done. Helped with the Park Vista initially. School board? Wasn't she on the school board as well? Yeah, it's great. Love this. Okay, yeah, let's hear for the moms. Let's do a photo.
We're missing some council members, so. It's going to be a good. All right, all right, folks, just a couple of photos here. And one, two, and one more. And how about one more? Outstanding. Thank you so much.
I'll be there.
Yeah, I'd like the volunteers to just come at noon.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, next up, Public Communications. How's the time and place? Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Do we have anyone that would like to address the dais?
I do not have any speaker cards, but is there anyone out there?
Once, going twice. Okay. A lot of people on holiday already, I think. We've got procedural motions, item A. Read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only. Do we have a motion to approve?
Perstak, so move.
Great, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Three, zero. Consent.
Excuse me. You passed over, um.
Oh, yes. Yeah, normally it's city manager follow-up on public comments. We didn't have any, so I glossed over that. But we have included Hyperion for the last three months. So, yeah, please fill us in. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I do have a couple of comments regarding update on Hyperion. Firstly, the South, the Air Quality Management District had a hearing December 15th, which staff attended, city manager's staff, along with the city attorney, who may have a few words to share also after my comments. But that was held on the 15th, where the AQMD Hearing Board discussed compliance or lack thereof, if you will, with the abatement orders that have been issued to date. On behalf of the city, I did submit a letter, as we usually do during these hearings, and it got read into the record, itemizing all of our concerns. And this letter and the recorded tape of the hearing can be found on the city's website, Regarding the perimeter road construction, which you know has been going on for a few months now, the project is 69% complete. Thankfully, the sheet pile work will not, will not be installed over the holiday. So they've ceased work from 12/26 to January 2nd. The installation will resume on January 3rd and is expected to be completed by the end of January. So it's getting close. I do want to report, though, that the contractor doing the work is taking measures to mitigate the noise and vibration caused by the construction. I know it's not, not everyone's completely happy, but they are making their best efforts to keep the vibration and the noise down. And then finally, the Hyperion air quality website is up, as we shared. This website publishes the results of three fence line air monitoring systems on a 24/7 basis. Currently, the monitors, as you know, are only detecting hydrogen sulfide. We're working on getting them to look at other contaminants. A link to this air quality website is also found on the city's website. That concludes the update. Unless the city attorney has comments.
Briefly, it was, and this has been through the last couple of hearings that the AQMDs held, the board appears very frustrated. They don't, I'm just summarizing, they are not pleased with the amount of information that's coming forward as part of the updates on these notices of violation. I think both, not only with the City of LA and its updates, but with its own staff about what's happening as far as trying to resolve the issues. The factor is so basic is to, this last meeting was a notice of violation themselves in the reports detailing out what's been done to address issues. Those weren't even made part of the record. The hearing board members didn't have them. They're very frustrated by that and made it very clear for the upcoming hearings that they want these things well in advance so they can actually read what the violations are and what work has been done by the staff. It was just really that rudimentary, and the frustration, you could see the frustration level on the board growing. And the City of LA had, as they've had the last couple of meetings, someone testifying, if you will, in very general terms, and talking about all the money they're spending in the big projects, and the board kind of hammered and said, "That's, that's nice, but what exactly does that doing about the odors and the conditions that are impacting the people in the neighborhood?" And so I was really impressed. The board was focused on trying to push LA about, you know, you throw out these $100 million numbers and projects, but you're not relating that to, you know, the problem and the people that are complaining. Part of what we submitted on, you know, the city meander was, again, the same kind of issues we've been bringing forward as neutral oversight with what's happening out there as far as the maintenance and operations, some third party to be overseeing what's occurring and keeping everyone up to date and making sure that things are being done. The air monitor issue that keeps being pushed, they have the equipment, they have the ability to put all the air monitors out there that were necessary to monitor the different odors and different chemicals coming out of that plant, they simply won't do it. And then finally, it was interesting, they, there was, they went on and on about the, and this was sort of a defense, I think, that the City of LA was using, oh, there's a delay from the time that the reports come in, the odor reports and things, until we get them. And so then sometimes we can't figure them out. And that's one of the points I made when I testified, if you will, is we've got people sitting there, they have noses, they should be able to smell when the odors are coming out. So, I mean, yes, people are filing reports, but why aren't you following up when you, when you smell things coming out of the plant? And there was never, you know, there was no real response to that, but it just, it's, it's frustrating watching them. You could tell the board's frustrated, and we'll continue to monitor it, and we'll continue to push them. That's essentially where we are with the AQMD part of this.
Thank you. Any update from Senator Ben Allen's office?
They, I had a discussion with their, and Elias and I have been communicating in the last, they are trying to work with the City of LA to see if they'll work with the City of El Segundo and wanted to set up a meeting with all of us to sit down and talk, which sounds great. It hasn't happened yet. We're supposed to hear from them sometime in the next week or two over whether they can get that to happen. I'm, I hope they can, but I'm skeptical because the City of LA has really not been communicating out. And I know Elias has been trying to stay on top of their own list of the, to-do list they had of trying to improve the facility that they won't even respond to or let us know where they are with their own list, so.
Well, the one good news is Barbara Romero, I don't know if you were on the email, I sent it to Elias and Daryl. Barbara Romero, who's in charge of sanitation for LA, reached out yesterday, emailed me and said that, "Per all of your requests," Elias, "it sounds like they finally are aligning their status reports to the ad hoc recommendations so we can at least track them and make sure they're aligned." So that's, that's positive. Have, you know, is there an opportunity to reach out to the mayor, the new mayor, Karen Bass, and see if we can build a relationship there as well?
You know, we'll reach out again to, yes, and I think we'll reach out, we're supposed to hear back from Senator Allen's staff, who was trying to set up these meetings so that we would have these dialogues.
You know, who's got a great relationship with her is David Herbst, who's been a friend of the city.
All right.
He can help set up a meeting, for sure. Dave Herbst, yep. Okay, great. And then, there's another, I thought I had another question there. Any comments, Carol? I thought, I feel like we might be missing something.
Well, the only comment is, you know, they have a new, don't they have a new council person representing the area? So maybe we should do some outreach there.
Yes, we will be doing that.
And then, and maybe we could do a tour, have that person come on the tour.
Absolutely.
Because one of the things that they were doing was, you know, they kept saying that there was a delay in, in getting the covers.
Yes.
And that there was an issue with manufacturing. So maybe if we could get an update on those covers, because they had, they were supposed to finish one component, and there was three stages, and one stages was complete, and then the other two were still uncovered or covered by tars. And they were saying that it was a manufacturing delay, so if we can get update on that.
Okay. And Carol, what was the timeframe? Didn't it say December of 2024?
Yeah.
Was when they thought they'd be done with those covers? Which they admitted was the key source of the odors, was his antiquated.
Correct.
System they have is not covered.
And one of the things that was quite interesting in that, on that tour, was, you know, we had asked, or I'd asked a question, you know, "How long do these covers actually last?" And it was 15 years. And I, and they had been in place for almost 20.
Right.
And I said, "Well, didn't you have planned, didn't you have a process and plan to anticipate them, their replacement?" And they had no plan, and they were so excited to tell me that they were instituting a new plan to ensure that this, you know, in 15 years, they would now order the next cycle. So it's just they're, it's that backwards.
Right. How, maybe Mrs. Voss has an opinion on this, but how can we distill? I don't know, we've communicated to the residents recently about our progress or how we're progressing with Hyperion or lack therein, but is there a way to distill everything that you've just articulated into one? Yeah.
Yes, Mayor, members of council, we do have the Hyperion page on the website, elsegundo.org/hyperion. We put routine updates on there whenever we get them. So it's constantly being updated. And then we also include Hyperion updates in the newsletter that goes out to the community.
Do we have a sense of how it's landing? Like, are people, do they, do we feel like they're apprised of what's going on in terms of progress? Or is it just there isn't as much smell right now so that people aren't as concerned and paying attention?
I've seen on social media people being referred to that webpage. So that tells me that people are aware of it, and there, there were those content on there that answers questions that come up on social media. I don't know how many people are actually clicking on that page, or I could look on the, the analytics to see that. I just don't have it on the top of my head.
And maybe, you know, you know, in the January news cycle is kind of a quiet time.
Yep.
So maybe this would be a good time for us to say our wish list for the City of LA, or recap of 2022, you know, what's happening with Hyperion, maybe do an art, news article about it and try to get that out there.
Yeah, that's actually a really good idea, because in January, we do slow down, because we put, we take our newsletter, we send it out every, the first of every month, and so we're not going to do it on January 1st. So we will be doing one-off focused stories throughout January, and then we're going to resume on February 2nd with the regular newsletter, but we could do something specific to this.
Well, and we could reach out to the LA Times and have them do a recap, you know, the, the best of LA in 2022 and the worst of LA in 2022.
Yeah, I think that's a really good idea, and I also think it's a good opportunity. If we're going to engage Karen Bass and the new councilperson in District 11 or whatever that is, that we should find a way to clearly and quickly communicate where we've been, the history, what's happened, because it's pretty complex. And if you're trying to get a new person up to speed and cut through all the noise, it's like, here's where we're at. And all we're asking for are these three things, and we're still not there yet. Make it as simple as possible, because Barbara Romero has asked us several times, "What do you want?" We're like, "We want you to implement the ad hoc recommendations as quickly as possible." Period, right? Pretty much?
We have a pretty succinct and to-the-point list that we've been, message that we've been putting out for months and months now, that we've been very consistent about that message.
Good. Okay, good. All right, let's see. Were anything else in that? No? Welcome, Councilmember Ryan Baldino to the dais. It's so good to see you up here. I mean, not that you haven't been up here for the last 12 or 14 years, whatever it is.
This was my seat when I started on planning commission.
And then you, you were here recently, right?
Well, yeah.
The last, how many years were you chair?
Seven.
Seven years as chair. Wow, it's awesome. So no comments about the way in which I facilitated meeting, okay?
I agree.
Just kidding. All right.
I'm taking notes. I've got some pointers.
Exactly, I see that. All right, we're on to consent. Any polls?
None for me.
No? Do we have a motion to approve?
Also move.
Perstak, second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, three, zero. Okay, we're on to, let's see here. Staff presentations. Item seven, conversion of the General Services Manager classification from civil service to at-will status and associated adoption of revised job title, classification specification, examination plan, and basic salary range. And I believe, there you are, Mrs. Reddick. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. The item before you tonight converts the recently vacated General Services Manager classification from civil service to at-will, revises the position title from manager to superintendent, updates the class specification. The exam plan, salary range, and placement in the unrepresented management confidential group remain the same, although these items are brought forward tonight due to the title change of the position. The proposed title change will maintain the division managers, the division manager level of the position, while the updates to the class beck will broaden the types of education and experience to meet the minimum qualifications. A division manager generally requires formalized education due to the administrative nature of the position, while a superintendent is typically obtains their knowledge, skills, and abilities through on-the-job training or certificate programs. So with this expansion of the title, we are making it so that you can qualify in one of two ways. You can qualify with education and a bachelor's degree, or with five years of experience and a bachelor's degree, or you could qualify with additional years of experience and certification in plumbing, electrical, HVAC, or aquatic facility operation. These changes will help us in the recruitment process to qual, to attract the most qualified candidates best suited for the position. And this conversion to at-will status is consistent with the previous manager positions I brought forward to the council.
Thank you, Mrs. Reddick, Director of HR. Any questions or comments from the council?
No, but this is a perfect example why I'm happy we have someone who knows HR working for our city, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have three items that we can approve together. It's to, one, approve the conversion of the General Services Manager classification from civil service to at-will. Two, approve the revision of the General Services Manager job title to General Services Superintendent. And three, approve the revised classification specification and examination plan for the General Services Superintendent position. So we can approve all three of those together unless someone is opposed. Someone like to move approval on those three items?
Sure, I'll move approval of all three.
Thank you.
Perstak, second.
Great, all those in favor? Aye. Aye, three, zero. Separately, we have a resolution, and the city attorney will ask him to read it, but the title that is, but it's to adopt the resolution establishing the basic salary range for the General Services Superintendent position. And Mr. Hensley, please.
Yes, a resolution establishing basic monthly salary range for a full-time job classification is ready for adoption.
Okay, would someone like to move approval?
Also move.
Thank you.
Perstak, second.
Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three, zero.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you very much. Okay, then we have item eight, Coupa or the Certified Unified Program Agency 2022 Program Evaluation. And we have Victor Morales of the Fire Department to present.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. So I do have a quick presentation that I would like to. Sure. All right, am I good? Awesome. So my name is Victor Morales. I'm the Environmental Safety Manager with the City of El Segundo Fire Department. And I am going to do a presentation on the recent evaluation of the State of California Coupa program. So what is Coupa? And I challenge anyone here to tell me what a Coupa is. Well, Coupa is actually the Certified Unified Program Agency. And what that means is, we are the local agency in charge of oversight of the following programs. Hazardous Materials Emergency Response Plan, or also known as Hazardous Material Business Plan, HMVP. The Underground Storage Tank Program, Above Ground Petroleum Storage Tank Program, Hazardous Waste and Treatment of Hazardous Waste Programs, and also the California Accidental Release Prevention Program, which is applicable to those facilities that handle acute hazardous materials and extremely hazardous materials. So El Segundo became certified by the State of California in 1997. And I have a little note here that says that we were denied in 1996 when we petitioned. But it took a coalition of businesses, the community, and public officials to petition CalEPA to certify El Segundo. I think it's worthy mentioning that the other Coupas around us in the Beach, in the Beach Cities area is LA City, which is a very large jurisdiction, and LA County, which is a very large jurisdiction. So when we became certified, state agencies and boards and departments and offices were tasked with oversight of the program implementation. Remember, the State of California has ownership of those programs, but they do delegate to the Certified Unified Program Agencies to implement that program. So our local agency is audited or evaluated every three years, and is, if anyone has dealt with the state, they know that it is a very comprehensive review of all the elements, including inspection, return to compliance, policies and procedures, inspection and enforcement plans, the fee and the fee accountability, as well as the training of the personnel and the certifications that they hold. So the 2022, they found one deficiency. The closure letters that we issued to operators of underground storage tanks, when they closed them, their wording and their language in their documentation required more detail. And they said that, um, we needed to, uh, we needed to make it better and include additional information. In addition to that deficiency, there were some incidentals that they found. Some of the site maps required some components. The permit that we issue, the language needs to be updated. The local ordinance that we have actually needs to be updated with the latest Health and Safety Code citations. Our inspection and enforcement plan needs to be updated with the most recent amended, amended, uh, Health and Safety Code provisions. And the software that we use had some glitches and, uh, in the data transfer. So, uh, we need to review and work with the vendor on, uh, handling the data software. I will provide you with a little bit of history on this. There are three possible Coupa ratings, the state rates agencies at three levels. The first one is unsatisfactory. That means that the agency in charge is not implementing the program properly. They are lacking elements, they do not have other work together, they are not performing the inspections. The second one is satisfactory to the, uh, State of California, but with improvement needed. And, uh, the third one is that the agency is meeting the standard. In 2015, El Segundo was rated unsatisfactory. They had 17 deficiencies plus whatever incidental findings they, they had. In 2018, the rating was satisfactory with some improvement needed. They found four deficiencies. In 2022, we had one. And my expectation, I will not have the final report until, uh, next month, but my expectations is that because of the nature, administrative nature of that deficiency, um, the standards will be met. So that report also states the outstanding achievements and accomplishments of the Coupa. After reviewing all that information, the state acknowledges that El Segundo Coupa has proactively assisted CalEPA with the transition for the Hazardous Material Business Plan and the CALAR programs, which were hold, being hold by other, uh, agency in the past, Office of Emergency Services. They were very happy with the detailed fiscal documentation that we provided. Concise, user-friendly, and readable. That was not me by any chance. That was our management analyst, Liz Leidig, and I am, I regret not having her every single day. They also, um, acknowledged that we have three trainings that we provide to the regulated community, free of charge, by the way, uh, on, uh, hazardous materials, hazardous waste, and also we do train our first responders on the use of the, uh, database. So they also acknowledged the fact that El Segundo Coupa, we are tiny, but we are mighty. We do participate in quite a few, uh, technical advisory groups, uh, different boards, local emergency planning committees, in the Beach Cities Care, Community Awareness and Emergency Response, LA Coupa's Group, and the District Attorney Environmental Crime Task Force. And we have to. Such a jurisdiction like ours, we need to be, uh, proactive and we need to have our voice heard. Otherwise, we will not, our, our businesses will, will suffer. So we were able to implement the CALAR Program Four, which is the refinery program, and the Assembly Bill 1646, Murasucci, um, integrate that with CARE, and, uh, they found no problems whatsoever. We are, uh, three full-time staff. Uh, we don't have participating agencies, we do not have consultants, we do not have, uh, any outside help for the job that we do. And they found that the unified program implementation was outstanding and the inspections were, um, pretty much outstanding as well. So let's go to the most important part, KPI factors, performance indicators. So we have about 320-plus facilities that have hazardous materials, and they have acute hazardous materials. The report found that we did perform 100% of the inspections. The report found that we obtained return to compliance 100%. And the report found that all the facilities are integrated with the California Environmental Reporting System, or SERES, which is the state database. On the underground storage tank, we have 30-plus facilities, sorry, 30, uh, tanks and 20 facilities. The key performance indicators show that we perform 100% of the inspections. We obtain 100% on the return to compliance, and all the facilities are adequately, um, implemented in SERES. The above-ground petroleum storage tank, same thing, 30-plus facilities, over 100 tanks that qualify, 100% of inspections, 100% return to compliance, 100% state coordination. Hazardous waste and treatment, we dipped a little bit, but not much. We've got 98% of the inspections completed, 99% of return of, to compliance, and 100% of the state database. And this is not working, oh, there it is. I included in this presentation a few notes and frequently asked questions, and I will go through those super quick. The Coupa is a self-supported program. That means that not a single dollar of El Segundo residents goes towards paying our salaries or our benefits or our cost. It's all paid by the facilities that have hazardous materials. So out of the 4,600 businesses in El Segundo, there is a handful of those, 300 and something, that do bear the cost of our, uh, program. So it's not one of those, uh, programs that drains the general fund or, um, requires a lot of support. Also, the Coupa provided, uh, fire marshal, um, when our, uh, previous fire marshal retired, I was, um, asked by, uh, our then-chief to, uh, cover the position, which I did gladly. And also I provided, uh, safety officer support to the, uh, COVID-19 emergency response effort in El Segundo. We used to, uh, provide suppression, uh, support on hazmat incidents whenever they have a hazardous material spills. That is no longer part of our program. And what does that mean? What is the local Coupa in what ways benefit El Segundo? First and foremost, we've get direct contact with the businesses that we regulate. That means we talk to them, we know the owners, we know their issues, we know their problems, they know their expectations. So there is direct involvement with the businesses. When it comes to plant checks and approving business for getting their business tax and their business license, we work with them. There is a provision in the government code that says that in order to get your certificate of occupancy, you need to be in compliance with Health and Safety Code, and we actually work with those construction sites to make sure that that certificate of compliance is, uh, received by the business shortly, and we work with the building officials as well. We do get, believe it or not, enhanced compliance as well, because we are able to approach and tackle problems in a faster way. And of course, uh, there is increased efficiency in having this program. In addition to those, we do provide public outreach and education through newsletters, website, event participations, and group collaborations. As a matter of fact, in one of the household hazards where it's run up, there will be a representative of the Coupa there. What else would do we do? Well, we work with nonprofits, uh, Beach Cities Care, which is a nonprofit of, uh, public agencies, emergency management, fire department, schools. We work with them, we meet with them, uh, we work with Chevron quite a bit on this, and we definitely, uh, appreciate their support. And it is a great resource. If anyone has five minutes of their day, you know, it wouldn't be a bad idea for them to go into their website and see the vast arrange of information that is there for them. And also we work with the Southern California Industrial Mutual Aid Organization, which is primarily petrochemical and refineries. And we are the voice of El Segundo in that organization. And that's about it for me. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Great presentation and great progress, especially relative to 2015. Wow, what a, what a long way we've come. Uh, I, this is my first question, I'll turn it over to my colleagues, but what happened in 2015? It was before your time, but systemically, what was the issue there? We had so many more deficiencies.
Well, this is a program that you have to embrace support and you have to have the personnel. It's not a program that you can just replace, there's not an administrative job that you can just get another person. So my understanding is that, um, there was a retirement, sorry. My, my understanding is that there was a retirement at the time, and, uh, there was no replacement, and something happened there. I, again, it was before my time, I don't know exactly what was. But I do know that shortly after, when I came on board, we were able to work on those deficiencies and get it corrected. And, um, once we were fully staffed, uh, you know, we were able to correct those quite a bit. And, uh, the state showed that we were satisfactory and we were improving. And hopefully, uh, like I said, I, I, my expectation is that the state will say that we do meet its standards.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, I think it was a great presentation. Very well done. Um, I, I just have two comments, um, so it truly more goes more toward, uh, the communication team. You know, one, one of the things we have, a lot of things we do in our town, and this is an example of, and we may not highlight it enough to showcase that we are so environmentally focused, you know, and that we as a city are really trying to make sure we're the best at what we do. So it'd be great if we could do some type of highlight program with the environmental committee, like come up with an idea of how do we push this information out there? That we are one city out of, you know, like you mentioned, only LA City and, um, LA County are Coupa, or, or, or Coupa.
Program.
Programs, right? My second thing was, you know, is there a market in, you know, I'm always looking for obviously fiscal opportunities, for us to share our successes with other cities and to, and, you know, provide a service or helps other cities become Coupa-approved, or like what is, and I know that's not the whole makeup of it, but, you know, we've obviously done a great job of provide, creating this in our city. Is there a way for us to share our successes with other cities or are cities interested in becoming Coupa-approved?
I do not withhold any information and I make myself available to any event. I make myself available to any, um, presentation. I make myself available to work and collaborate with any other jurisdiction. As long as I get an invitation and maybe a burrito, I will go there.
So, I mean, because I'm surprised, like, you know, Carson or some, a city like that or Gardena wouldn't be interested in, um, also moving forward in this direction, so.
Well, definitely, yes.
Well, congratulations, um, thank you for explaining how you are funded. I appreciate that information. And, uh, another benefit is you are helping us maintain our most business-friendly city acumen, because nobody wants to have to deal with going through the County of Los Angeles bureaucracy.
I know, I know what it takes to get a license in other jurisdictions, and definitely I can say that that is an advantage that we have in El Segundo, we should treasure that.
Absolutely, so thank you so much for all your work, and I, I, I judge the complexity of issues by how many acronyms there are in a presentation. And you've won the award so far, so.
I, I'll give you the long list then.
Yeah, it's okay. Appreciate what you do, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Hey, real quick, sorry, I was, yeah, I just have a cup, sorry, Mr. Morales. Okay, it's hard to fathom, 100, over 100 above-ground tanks? And I think you said 30 underground storage tanks?
Correct, yes.
Some of those have to be on Chevron, I would think.
A good majority of them are on Chevron. And, but also remember that in this program, anything that, uh, goes from an emergency generator to a half-a-billion-gallon tank of petroleum product is covered within this program. So some of those are smaller tanks that might not need as, as much as, uh, the oversight that, that, uh, tank in Chevron requires.
Got it, and I know just from my past experience with one of my businesses that hazardous waste is not allowed to be stored in El Segundo, if you're not a generator, if I'm not mistaken, is that?
So Chevron do have, uh, they, they call it treatment, storage, and disposal facility.
So TSTF, but they're the only one in the city that's allowed, I think, correct?
Correct, great law, there, there's.
Got it, um, so, but even with that, we have 100-plus hazardous waste generators, that's also incredible to believe. Okay, then, uh, then I have a question, those are just observations. We don't do the hazardous material spill or containment now. So if we have a spill, who does it, is it LA County or who would come?
I believe it's LA County, uh, the one responding, yes.
Okay, and we don't do anymore because it's outside of expertise probably, or?
That you will have to.
Just curious. Is it not significant, probably doesn't happen very often anyway, chief?
We never have, we're first responders operational, and so we have to, if there is a spill, we'll call LA County Hazmat and the regional response for us, so.
Got it, and then they would charge us probably, or charge the person that perpetrated, I hate to use that word, but, this bill? And we have an on-call, on-call contract, Mr. Sessi, thank you very much, it was a great presentation, really appreciate it, great work.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we're on to item nine, open the recruitment process for the positions on the cities committees, commissions, and boards. So here we're just directing staff to open the recruitment process.
Yes, that's correct.
Any discussion? Do we have a motion to approve?
Should we announce what's open for our large home viewing audience?
Yeah, please, do you have the list in front of you? Councilman Baldino? Nor do I, um. Yeah, let's, okay, we'll come back to that one, that's a good idea. Uh, Mr. Jennings is, we'll go on to item 10, and then we'll go back to item nine. Item 10, announce appointments, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, we just did a bunch of interviews, was that last week, Carol? Two weeks ago, December 8th, thank you. And, uh, we have two announcements, two appointments, I should say, two announce. We have Louis Hill, who's doing a full term expiring October 31st, 2025, and we have Emily Atmore to a partial term expiring October 31st, 2024. So congratulations to that important committee. And we'll come back here for a second, let's, uh.
I have the, uh.
You have the list?
Yeah.
Great, would you please read it?
There is one position open on, or that will become open on the Recreation and Parks Commission, four on the Arts and Cultural Advisory Committee, two on the Library Board of Trustees, one on the Planning Commission. Actually, I think that's two with Mr. Councilmember Baldino up here. Cause I noticed his name is not on here. And, uh, DEI, uh, three positions, capital improvement program, advisory committee is one position, and environmental committee is one position.
So that's 14 opportunities. Thank you for being so helpful, yeah. Yeah, and from someone who spent, uh, how many years again? 12? 14 years. 14 years.
The dungeon of City Hall.
14 years on the planning commission, uh, it's a great way to learn the city, to give back, and, uh, get to meet fellow residents as well. We've, we've all done it up here, so highly encourage you to do so. And then, what do they do? They basically will email you, Michelle Jennings, right? Mjennings@elsagundo.org, M-J-E-N-N-I-N-G-S@elsagundo.org with interest. And then she gets you an application, and we'll go from there. We do the interviews, interviews are 10 minutes. And for the last few years, we've gotten back to all the candidates with a yes or a no within 24 hours. So you'll know right away whether or not you got the appointment. So please, 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 please apply, and don't get, uh, dismayed if you don't get it the first time, because oftentimes people will take two or three times and they get on a committee. All right, thank you for the reminder on that, Councilmember Baldino, so we're gonna go to item. Oh yeah, we need to take a vote on this, yeah, uh, do we have a motion to approve and opening the appointments?
For six to move.
Thank you. I have a second, thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three zero. Okay, going back to, uh, where are we now? It's, uh, 10. I did that, yeah, reports, man, we are moving. City Clerk, any reports this evening?
No, just happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and see you all in January.
No, just happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and see you all in January.
See y'all in the new year. Thank you, City Treasurer, I don't think he's here. Councilmember Drew's absent, Councilmember Baldino.
Thanks for that correction. I just want to thank staff on how welcoming you've all been with accompanying my schedules and all the meetings. I look forward to so many more meetings with all you and just becoming the best texting buddy with Mesia ever. So thank you all for the warm welcome, I look forward to working with you, thank you.
Thank you, welcome. Councilmember Pürstek.
Yeah, I just want to give a shout out to Ally, our Ally Mancina, Mancini, Chief Lee, and all the others who helped with the holiday luncheon last, this week. It was great, well-attended by the staff, nuggly sweaters contest. Ally, you know, was the cruise director and brought in a lot of games, and it was a lot of fun for everybody, so thank you very much. Very well received. And I just want to remind everybody that we're having the menorah lighting on Thursday night at 5:30. So please come out for that, and it'll be a great celebration if you want some lachas. They're here at City Hall, in the plaza. And everyone, have a wonderful Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and have a wonderful, hope 2023 will be an amazing year.
Thank you, Councilmember Pürstek. And it was really fun today to be at the U.S. Space Force Base. I think it's Space Force Base, no longer Air Force Base. But anyway, to celebrate the third birthday of the Space Force today, and that was really cool. They often, when they do those events, as you know, Mrs. Vos, they'll go through the history of how the Air Force Base there came to be with General Shriver and their impact on GPS and satellites. It's fascinating, the impact that they've had on global warfare, right here in El Segundo. So, third birthday, and Colonel Walsh was there as a base commander, as well as Brigadier General Cottorn, and it was really great to be there for that, and proud of them and happy for them. And I've got really important business next, which is, this is an annual request. It's one we don't take lightly at all, it's a conditional use permit. This is the Mr. S. Claus Annual Request for a Conditional Use Permit, Business License, and various waivers. And as you know, we're a business-friendly city, third time around, so we like to accommodate anyone as quickly as we can, right, staff? So, this is going to require some council consensus, so I'll read through this. One is to approve and immediately issue a conditional use permit to Mr. S. Claus. Two, approve the use of air rights and waive the Santa Monica Radio 160R procedure. FAA should be contacted, Mr. George. Grant a free business license to S. Claus Enterprises, which is a nonprofit organization. Waive El Segundo Municipal Code 8-4-11B driveway permits required. Chief Bermudas, hopefully you're getting this, and El Segundo Municipal Code 8-5-11 parking on grades. Also, number five, waive the noise ordinance, El Segundo Municipal Code 7.2.3, to permit the clatter of reindeer hooves, the shouting of reindeer names, and the sound of bells on December 24th and 25th, 2022. Fine, well, not finally, actually got a couple more. Waive the trespass ordinance, El Segundo Municipal Code 7-6-3, to allow Mr. S. Claus to deliver gifts. Number seven, waive the animal control ordinance, including Section 6-2-8, dealing with animals at large, to allow eight reindeer to land on rooftops in El Segundo. And finally, eight, waiver of the pooper-scooper regulations. We actually have one of these regulations, El Segundo Municipal Code 7-1-4. We do, wow. Additionally, Mr. S. Claus has been directed to the Coastal Commission for Clearance Over the Ocean, the DMV for valid vehicle registration, that definitely is not going to come back in time, the Department of Health and Welfare to ensure his elves are receiving minimum wage, and to the Air Quality Management District, we might have some contacts there now, to ensure a safe and clear sleigh ride. Do we have consensus?
Absolutely.
So moved, approved.
All right. Congratulations, Mr. S. Claus staff, we'll be in touch with you shortly. City Attorney.
Just happy holidays to everyone, thank you.
Thank you, City Manager.
Likewise, happy holidays, be safe, and have a nice holiday.
Well, let the record state, we are adjourned in 55 minutes, because we started a minute late. Everyone have a great Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, Diwali, everything. Thank you so much, bye.